We start, please, everybody joins us in the presentations. Mr. Curry, you start.
My pleasure, Mr. Curry. To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Bradley's got a little standing. Maybe he'll straighten out. That's not Patricia's stomach yet. Okay, the first order of business here is the approved correction of the March 17th, 2015 minutes to read. The 2014-15 school calendar shall be further revised as follows as a result of school cancellations for extreme weather conditions according to the provisions of County Policy 8210, school calendar in which we locate 82545. Date closed was on March 5th. That would now become a planned date that was originally scheduled for June the 12th, but that was revised, so the makeup date will be June the 12th. So just one revision from what we did last time. Okay, now we'll go to the approval of the minutes of the March 17th, 2015 statutory and regular meetings as corrected. Have a motion, please.
I move.
Ms. Smith made the motion.
Second.
Second by Mr. Wilkinson, and then all yes vote.
Yes.
Can you hear me, Bradley?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure. All right, under public comments, do we have anybody signing, Bertie?
No, sir.
Anybody there? Okay. All right, we'll go to the presentations in person. Rod Cummings, transportation update. Mr. Cummings.
Hey, good afternoon. First of all, and we'll start out, I want to brag a little bit on mechanics. We have, actually, we have a one to eighteen ratio of mechanics to buses, which is a little bit, really quite a bit higher than most counties. State recommends about a one to ten ratio, and according to the discussion I had with our state inspector, at least with the counties that he serves, they range anywhere from one to eight to one to twelve, twelve ratio. Even with this, we do pretty good on our inspections, and I laid out for you the last two inspections. And if you'll look at that, what we have is has bus numbers that he inspected down the left-hand side, and then in the print, it has the things that he found wrong with or things that we needed to correct, and it has a P or an S out. From the primary defects are a little bit more serious than the secondary. But essentially, what he does is when we present the bus to him, he takes every one of them out of service while he's doing his inspection. After he completes his inspection and lets us know what needs to be fixed, we have an opportunity to fix them. So that's in the next to the last column over is the return to service column. But these are lab, and we had, well, on the 10th, I guess, all of them was returned to service on that day. And on the 25th, we had three buses that weren't able to be returned to service. And that doesn't mean that those buses was in worse shape than some of the other ones. It just may mean that we didn't have the part to fix it at that particular time, or may not have the time to get it fixed. So we fix it on a later date, and then we have the option of either taking it to him wherever he's at, and he'll meet us, and he'll put it back in service, or wait until the next time that he's scheduled to come in. Actually, we have sixty-two buses. We have forty-six on regular routes. We have two supplemental runs for special needs issue that we had, which takes up one bus and seven spares. We also have, on the lot, we have kind of eight, seven or eight buses that we're probably going to end up selling in the next little bit, but we'll discuss that a little bit later day. So far this year, we've had thirty-one buses that have been inspected. Of the thirty-one buses, there were only eight that were taken out of service for that particular day that we couldn't get back in. Last week, we had four buses that were out for repair at Shox. We had three that was at Heritage, and we had one at Western Branch Diesel for bigger things than we could take care of, which puts our drivers in spare buses. Then we have sometimes we take them out and we do our PMs because we find some issues with them, and we don't feel that they're safe for our drivers or our kids to be in. Then obviously, as this report reflects, sometimes when the inspector comes, there's a possibility they'll put even more buses out of service. This actually makes it hard on everybody. When we have buses that are out of service and we don't have the spares to run, we sometimes have to either postpone, cancel, or reschedule some of our evening trips because our priority is getting the kids home from school and then making the extra runs. It's not always when we have to postpone or change a run in the evening that it's because of a lack of a bus. Sometimes it's because of the lack of subs that are available. Sometimes, most of the times when we have issues with these runs going out in the evening, it's because of the time that they requested the part. Most always, if a run is requested, go four fifteen to four thirty, we can always have somebody back to do that. When they want to go earlier in the day, it just makes it more difficult. Recently, we had a meeting with all of our area bus drivers, and when we were talking to the bus drivers, every one of them indicated, or every group indicated, that we needed some help in the garage with our mechanics, that they have too much, too much work and they can't keep up. You know, some of the problems that we have are due to a request of the inspector to ramp up our PMs to try, we're currently doing about three a day. He wants us to do four. He wants us to do it more thorough, and I believe that's what we need to do. But because we're ramping up our PMs, we're also finding more defects, so it takes longer to make those repairs, and we're really having trouble keeping up. As I stated earlier, I think we have three mechanics. The three mechanics, one of them is primarily doing PMs. He does the inspection like the state inspector does, and he also does the grease and oils. That only leaves us with two mechanics to do the repairs of the buses for the problems that he's found. Even to compound our issue even more, our funding replacement for buses is going to be reduced, at least that's preliminary work that we get, which that means that our fleet's going to get older and we're going to have even more repairs to do. The preliminary numbers that we had for new bus purchases for this year was three thousand, or three hundred fifty-one thousand, four hundred fourteen dollars. It's not official yet, but the number that I get is that we'll end up with a thirty-some percent cut, which will mean two hundred thirty-eight thousand, one hundred eighty-seven dollars. As you can see, this is going to make our repairs, old buses even more, more important. So I guess the thing that I'm requesting is, I need extra help in the garage. Honestly, what we really need is we need two mechanics in the morning on an early shift from six to two. We need two mechanics in the evening with a lighter shift, somewhere between eleven to seven or ten to six. And I really like the lighter shift because, as you know, we have activity buses that takes kids home in the evening. Most of the time, they leave the high school at six-thirty, which means they get to Harps or Midway usually about seven-thirty. So we have buses on the road, and if there is a problem, there's nobody to help. So I think that's something that I would ask you to consider, but I also think it's something that we needed to do because of the aging fleet, because to save people and kids. Now, as I mentioned, too, one of the things that we started looking at is ordering buses for next year. We want to try to get that done as early as we can, but with our figure, the way that it is, a two hundred thirty-eight thousand probably that we'll have, we'll be able to order maybe two buses. Normally, since I've been here, we get about four buses a year. So that, you know, again, puts us behind a little bit. I've even called Canal County to explore the possibility of buying a couple of used buses. They have a bigger fleet, they have a quicker turnaround on their, on their buses than we do. They'll have some O-sixes and sevens that may go up for sale in the fall. That may be something that we need to look at, too. And there's always the possibility, and Bertie and I talked about it last year, with being able to lease buses. So there's several options with, that we have, we need to look at, and I'll look forward back later about purchasing the buses. Any questions?
Yeah, I have another mechanic. Do you have room in the garage for another mechanic?
Yes. We have, currently, we have two guys that come in in the morning, six to two. I've had Bronn stays a little bit later. They would be able to work along with that other person. One is something that would desperately, they, what would make it, in my opinion, even better, if we were able to have an additional one that did just the PMs, then I would have two people that could do the repairs in the morning, two that could do it in the evening, and one person doing the PMs.
Well, I certainly agree, someone needs to be there later.
Absolutely.
Now, if they're there in the evening like that, would they be able to do this more than just regular maintenance? Is that what you're saying, they could do actual repairs?
Yeah, they could do actual repairs. If we can get our spare buses in line, then if we had a major repair, which is what we do now anyway, then the regular driver would have to take a spare while we were doing those major things. And it really wouldn't be any different than in the mornings from six to two, when we've got two mechanics in there because, you know, five-thirty or six, we've got buses on the road. They don't come in the garage to wait, so they really can't do a whole lot of repairs in that amount of time.
I know, one time, you know, we had one person over there later in the evening by themselves.
Yes.
That there was a concern that they might be doing things, and that they could be hurt or something, that might be with them, and I can't, that probably just kept her from doing some repairs.
Yeah, but being by yourself, though, there are a lot of the jobs one person can't do. You know, even the PMs that they have to do, really, he can't do them by himself. So what we've been doing, as we started this new thing, is we have the drivers bring the bus in and they do the PMs, so they can turn the wheel, work the brakes, and do those things when he's checking it. And once he does those checks, then they're free to go. But most jobs we have are with one person, and with just one in the evening, there are a lot of things that can't be done.
And one of the, I'm sorry, but one of the things that he keeps saying, he's saying PMs, and that's preventive maintenance for anyone that's not familiar with.
Oh, sorry.
So those prevent, make, yes, things that they can't do by themselves, so.
But you're, I mean, I think that's a common concern about having someone there later in the day, opposed to right now, because I guess now they're, they have to contact the person directly and they have to...
Yeah, as far as the bus drivers go.
Yeah.
In the evening at five, when Tammy leaves, there's nobody over here.
That's what I mean, and we've got people on the road that watch six, maybe.
Yeah, probably seven-thirty.
Well, I mean, not count the extra, I mean, just regular runs, probably.
Yeah, regular runs come in around five, five fifteen.
So there's nobody there even?
Yeah, when they're, when they're on the return.
Well, how many buses do we have right now?
Sixty-two.
Okay. Now, of those sixty-two, how many are regular buses?
Fifty-five.
Those are regular runs?
No, the forty-six regular runs.
Well, what I'm trying to say is, how many spares do we have?
Yeah, we have about eight.
So there's about eight spares?
Yeah.
Okay. So if they're taken off the road by the, either something you all see, or anything the inspector sees, you can accommodate none more than eight, I mean.
Yeah, and like I said, this past week, we had four buses that were out to Heritage or someplace that's four spares that are out of service.
Now, that's another thing, if they're going to Heritage or whatever, those are things that really our mechanics can't do anyway, right?
Most of the time, or else it's warranty work.
That's what I mean, we're not...
One at Western Branch Diesel's transmission.
It's either beyond our knowledge, or, I guess with computers and stuff, they want you to be able to pick something, or they're under warranty, we can't do it.
Right.
So if you have some up there, then a combination of maybe some things where they're out of service, or things you all know, and after eight, then we're, we got a problem.
We're, and actually, we borrowed a bus Thursday or Friday, I borrowed one from Boone County, so that, because we were in a bind, so that some of these kids can take, you know, these evening trips, and one was off again, truck.
So is that really the biggest, I mean, as far as regular runs, you're able to get those at the end, but sometimes it's just going extra critical runs?
Just extra runs.
What kind of mileage would those spare buses have on them?
I don't know. I asked the director in Canal County, and he said he had some O-sixes and sevens that they were going to put out there, and he puts it on the site website that has the buses for auction, and we can look at them there and get the, you know, mileage and stuff off of.
I had referenced the ones we have, the eight that we have, but we feel we can't even get any idea.
The ones that we have, that we don't use, or the other ones?
No, the ones that you're using as spares. You said you had eight to the...
Yeah, I'm not sure.
Just a rough estimate.
Yeah, I'm not sure. Say, somewhere in eighty to ninety thousand.
Now, in addition to these, you were saying we have some other excess buses that eventually...
Yeah, we have, we have seven or eight that we feel like that they're beyond repair. I have one that, one of the floors coming out, it costs too much to put right in. We had one that we sold in the last thing that they never did pick up.
It's still here.
It's still here, so we're going to sell it again.
Well, good, keep doing that.
Sell two or three times. We can just keep getting part of the money, you'll be okay.
Well, I, you know, there's a couple of things I think you've addressed, concerns that I had as far as mechanics being available after the four o'clock, when I guess the other mechanics leave, and definitely, I think everybody realizes we need to have somebody there when that happens. Anybody else have any other concerns, which I think Ron said on most of them, that I was thinking, Carol, you got anything?
Rod, who takes the calls if there's a problem in the morning, like a bus breaks down?
Early morning.
Early morning.
Usually, it's one of the mechanics that are here. They start at six. I've got two of them in here, and they take the calls.
They get in touch with you then?
Uh, depends on what it is. Yeah, sometimes my phone starts ringing pretty early at two, so.
Do they also leave and go, maybe?
Yes.
Early in the morning, or something like that?
Yeah, if we have something broke down, they'll, they'll take off, you know, go.
That's one thing.
Fix it, yeah.
Or I didn't know that, or they were just out there yelling, "Help!" Maybe a combination.
We had to have them go.
A combination of the two. Okay. Anything else, Mr. Cummings?
I have a couple of things. If, if you recall, Rod, I think Mr. Young, is it Rich Young, is that his name?
Stone.
Stone, sorry, Mr. Stone. He is our inspector, and he was, he comes pretty regularly.
Yeah.
Say, in January, I think it ended, then he, he was off for surgery or something.
Yeah, he had knee surgery, and actually, on this, the first one was his first day back from knee surgery, and that's why we only did four buses, that's about all he could handle at that.
Okay. Because I know you are pretty, you know, you want to know when he comes and that kind of thing.
Well, and he's, I heard, sent an email this afternoon. He'll be here next Wednesday, I believe.
How many times does he come this year? Do you have that, just off your, off your head?
Eight, maybe, I, I don't know. I've got papers, but I don't...
So I mean, roughly, about once a month, maybe?
Uh, he's kind of come a little bit more often than that, I think, maybe once every, he seems to have lately one every couple of weeks, but he's probably trying to catch up to that time he was off to.
And I, I try to give you all that as soon as he gets it to me, except this last one, I knew he was coming, so I'll give it right now.
Do you know when he's coming?
He usually will email the week before to let us know his schedule, and then, you know, which last week, when he came, it was fortunate that he did because he had originally scheduled to come on an early out day. If he would have came on an early out day, then, you know, he wouldn't have been able to get regular buses, so we flipped something around so that he'd come on.
When he does come, I mean, if he notifies you a week ahead of time, at what point do you know what buses he's going to?
Most of the time, we pick the buses based on which ones that have been, gone through the PM recently, and he wanted to do that because it's kind of a, a training kind of thing for him with us and how we do the PMs. So if we do the PM, we'll bring a bus and present it to us, and he can show us what we missed or what we need to do to do a better job with us.
Thank you.
The other thing, when you talked about requesting an additional mechanic, and you alluded to the meetings that we had, and I think I had talked to all that we've had, meetings that we will come forth with all the information, but from every area, every group, they talked about it would be so beneficial for them, and kind of almost, you know, net, totally necessary to have an additional person, that the mechanics are doing a good job, but they just, they don't have enough people there to keep the buses in operation like they were expected, so.
Yeah, that's true. They were pretty adamant about that, that we, that they do a good job, and that kind of stuff. You know, there was a couple shots taken, too, but for the most part...
But yeah, we're looking at the big picture.
Forget the picture, but for the most part, you know, it was concise, is that they need to have it.
Well, I mean, we, for the most part, I probably have as many bus runs as we had several years ago, and we had more mechanics, right? I don't know how many we had.
Well, we've had three since I've been here. I've heard tales of six at one time, and I don't know when that was.
Well, I don't either, I just think that at one time, we had more than three, but the number of buses have probably hasn't changed too much.
No, we still have the same.
Still have the same area covered. Okay, anything else? Thanks, Rod.
Understood.
Andrew, I want to take that under advisement, Office Superintendent. Okay. Next on here, we have Joe Parsons, controls upgrades at West Hamlin Elementary. Mr. Parsons.
I think probably the last time I was here and gave you all a report on, on the energy program, I mentioned to you that we were in the process of doing some controls upgrades at West Hamlin. I've been here as the inter manager now for seven years, and that has been a constant thorn in our side. I'm glad John's here, he could probably confirm that. We've, we've had problems controlling that building, and the issue had been in the past that we had added indoor controls, and the old Johnson controls, or Metasys system is what it's called, was not taken off, and they did some kind of a computer interface so that our controls weren't actually controlling the equipment, they were controlling the old Johnson controls. And as they have worn down, it's made it harder and harder for us to maintain a comfortable environment over there, identify problems we've had. I have a real small budget that the superintendents have allowed me to use from the demand reduction system or program that I have us involved in, where the power company pays us money to, to be on standby in case of an emergency. And occasionally, it accumulates enough money. I've been using it for like LED lights and programmable thermostats, things of that nature. And I had enough money accumulated, we were having so many problems in the library with that rooftop unit, and also in the four rooms at the very end of the building where the tennis court was. So we contracted with Mason and Berry, and I used money out of that fund to pay for those repairs. Now, as you can see on the sheet that I provided you, for the rooftop unit alone, Mason and Berry charges thirty-eight hundred dollars to do these upgrades and repairs, eighteen hundred dollars per room for the four classrooms. In addition to that, there was money for a control box and some software upgrades that they had to have. It was quite a bit of money. The eleven thousand dollar figure that I put here does not include the software upgrade and the box that, that I put up there. And then, that seemed to help those rooms immensely, it definitely helped the library. So we decided we would try to do the other rooms, but money was a problem. So I got hooked up with Kenny Hugher from the West Virginia Department of Education, and this is what he does. He goes around on the OEPAs visits and does inspections on your, on your physical plants, boilers, your chillers, efficiency, and he told me that he helped several other counties do upgrades to their systems, and that if we would buy the parts, he would do, he would come in and do the labor for free for these upgrades. So that's what we tried to do, and I wanted to let you know that we have completed the work on the entire building, on four additional rooftop units and twenty-nine classrooms, that if we would have paid Mason and Berry's price to have done, would have cost us an additional sixty-seven thousand, four hundred dollars to do those projects. Now, Kenny told us that we could save money by buying used controls on the internet, on eBay. So I worked with Bertie and Darlene Neal out of Bertie's office. Darlene set us up an eBay account, and there's just so many people here in your building that came together to make this happen. Danny Daly found monies in an, in an old infrastructure account to pay for some of the work that had already been done, reimbursed me for that. Darlene Neal set up the eBay account, and we purchased, we needed twenty-nine, but we bought forty used controllers for about a thousand dollars. Twenty-two dollars a piece is what we paid for. To buy a new controller, it was going to be two hundred and sixty-seven dollars. So we purchased these used equipment. Bertie was able to come up with some money for me. I bought brand-new equipment, relays, switches, wire for the twenty-nine rooms. We spent sixty-one hundred dollars there. So a thousand for the controller, sixty-one hundred for the relays and switches. During the project, we had to buy another roll of wires, roughly five hundred dollars. And together with, with those things, and Dana Smith allowing, he approached one of his maintenance guys, I guess you can't change their schedule without asking, and he approached one of the guys and asked, "Would you care to work evening shift with Joe and help with this project?" So I worked with one of Dana's maintenance guys who agreed to work evenings, and we went over and pulled wire and built control modules. John was over and saw us working, putting those control modules together, and it's, it wasn't a lot of fun, but we got it done. And then Kenny come in and did the work, and he laid out what we needed to do when he wasn't here. The first time he come in, we did one hallway, and then we pulled, me and the maintenance guy went over and worked a couple of different evenings, pulled the wire for the rest of the building, and then Kenny came back in, and in two nights, we finished the building. The total cost of the West Hamlin project with the rooms that we had already done, come to, without the four rooms that we'd already done, come to eleven thousand, four hundred and seventy-seven dollars is what we have in the project. That's with Kenny Hugher's free labor, me working on it, and Dana's maintenance people. The difference between what Mason Berry would estimate to do that job and what we actually did the job for is fifty-five thousand, nine hundred and twenty-three dollars. That's stuff that needed done. It has drastically, at this point, reduced our comfort complaints at West Hamlin. It has helped us identify mechanical issues. We've got a room over there that's got a motor that's burned out, we had to order a new motor. We had another room, Michelle's room, that had a valve and an actuator that turns the, the hot water valve, open and close, is bad. Our maintenance guy just went over and worked on that today. So I think we're going to have, once, and we're still going to identify a few mechanical issues, and there are a couple of small things, sensors that still need to be tied into the system, and Kenny is doing that as he can from his office in Charleston. He's got to build, he'll log in and work on our computer. We had a problem in Michelle Shelton's room yesterday. I called Kenny, he logged in, and I came in this morning, and it's fixed. Now, to go to an outside contractor like Mason and Berry and have that done, that's probably a thousand-dollar call. So Kenny has also worked with our maintenance guys over here, showing them how to change these actuators, and some of that work, Chris Toppens, is taking that on. That's going to save us a bunch of money. So I want to make sure I didn't miss anybody. Debbie Wheeler was in Dana's office, ordered all these parts for us. I want to not leave out Greg Gosney, because before we even talked about West Hamlin, we were going to do Guy and Valley. Remember, I came to you... You remember, I came to you once before, and we burned up a four thousand dollar compressor at Guyan Valley, because somebody, not an employee of the school system, had gone in and set the air conditioning at fifty degrees and left it overnight, and it burnt the compressor up trying to get to that temperature. So we're going to put controls there. We've already ordered all the parts to have that done. As a matter of fact, some of the parts have already been mailed over. Hoss Farley from up at Harts Community Center, the building we gave him, they had a control box enclosure and a net controller in that building that ran their card reader system in, in the building, which is no use to them anymore. And they agreed to let our maintenance people come up there and remove that box and controllers, and we've already mounted it at West Hamlin, and that's what's going to run the system there. Kenny's already, he came down last week, excuse me, and I went with him, and we went over, and he did a wiring diagram and explained what type of wire at each one. And I'll work with the maintenance guys, and we'll get that all finished before he comes in. When we're done with the Guyan Valley project, just in the gym only, we'll be able to control both of the air conditioners and all three of the hanging gas heaters in the building. From over here on the computer, Jonah, if he's got a dance, a ballgame, whatever, all he's going to have to do is, is give us a call, and we'll make the adjustment, just like we do with any of the other buildings that we have control. But I think it was a huge team effort. Danny Daly also came up with an additional three thousand dollars from some other type of an infrastructure account that he had to pay for the upgrades at Guyan Valley. And Greg was pulling, doing something at West Hamlin, pulling some wire and had a lift. And he said, if you had the wire while I had that lift, I would go ahead and run the fiber optic wire from Guyan Valley's building, main building over to the gym, to help facilitate this project. I approached Danny about that, Danny said, that's where we want to go anyway, that's the direction we headed, and he approved us to purchase that wire out of the three thousand dollars that he gave us to do the Guyan Valley project. Because we got all the other parts so cheap, we had quite a bit of that money left over. So that's, that was done, and that's already been accomplished. I think Greg finished that job up last week. So I just wanted to stop by and let you know, everybody from Bertie's office, to Dana's office, to Danny Daly's office, and, and of course, myself, has pitched in, and we did a pre-substantial upgrade that costs, would have cost an enormous amount of money. And I think in the long run, it's going to be much, much better for John and his people over there. But the last thing I would request out of all of this is, I would like to draft a letter for you all's signature to Kenny Huger's supervisor, who, I don't have his name right on the tip of my tongue, Pickens, I believe is his name, Mike Pickens. And thank them for all the work that he's done down here. He's, I mean, he's worked away from home, stayed in hotels in the Barbersville area, come down here at night. One day, he came down here, spent all day doing inspections with Dana, and then he come over there and worked till ten, eleven o'clock at night with us. So he's gone above and beyond what, what should be expected of anybody, and it's really helped us out, I'm sure. See if I have any questions?
Do I have any particular questions? Greg, you know, we, this is kind of, obviously, everybody likes to see a cooperative effort on behalf of all of you, saving us money, getting the job done, I mean, there's more. And as far as Mr. Huger's concerned, I agree, I just want to mention that, could we send him some kind of acknowledgement there, how you think it would be a supervisor, that would be best, I agree.
I'm willing to draft a letter, or you all can do it yourself, however you want it done, but I, I think that's very great.
I think too, I just want to ask you to, if you could do something like that, I'm sure Mr. Huger would agree.
And... One last thing too, the longer-term goal here is after we're completed at Guyan Valley, we're probably going to try to do the same thing to Duol with the gymnasium up there, because they've got exactly the same types of air conditioners that we have over at Guyan Valley. And we're going to take a chance of having the same issue up there.
A little bit of preventative work can make a great save, you know?
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, let's move on to the next one here. West Hamlin Little League Baseball, I was going to talk about West Hamlin Baseball. You, Mr. Roy, or someone else?
I can speak, I don't know the specifics about what exactly is going to happen. But this came about because of the Little League, I think, maybe merged with Salt Rock, due to the fact that there was not a baseball facility over this way. So I was approached by, by Chip and Keith about putting a field, there was an old field there, now there's a backstop, nothing's been done with that for a long, long time. And they, they asked if, if it would be possible for us to put that field there. And I said, well, we will have to talk with the board first, and check with Dana. And I've called Miss Utility to see if there may be any, I know we have the modules added out there, I didn't know if there would be any existing gas, electric lines buried. So I called and had them set up appointments to check on if there were any on the ground, so... Personally, for, for our school, I think it would be beneficial for us to have it there, because as it is now, it's, it's, it's more unkept. There's an old building out there that they've used, either demolished or fixing, and some... And I, I went up today just to look at it, and we put some field dirt in. There's lots of things, I'm sure they've already looked at, and he can answer the specifics about what, but I, I just wanted to see if there would be...
I saw Chip this morning, he, I guess he was planning on counting something else to tell us.
I'll try to call him to get a hold of him.
Yeah, you missed a call there.
But we've got the, the money approved for making primary carries on the bow over our fence post from Top Rail. We have enough money in the league to buy the rest of the drill, the fence and brackets. Compared to what we built, when the T-ball built the Hamlin, which is, this one at West Hamlin is going to be a little bit bigger. We had like fifteen, sixteen hundred dollars. And Brian built it too.
Everything sounded great, because I have one question to ask, she was wanting to say, how much is it going to cost us? He said, nothing, I said, well, that's good.
Yeah, that's...
That's what we want to hear.
Yeah, it's not going to cost you that way, we just need permission.
I would, I think, what I'd like to see, if we could just have some kind of a rough sketch of the way things, how it's laid out. You know what I mean, like, what's here, what's there, just not anything elaborate, but, you know, just for us to be able to see, you know, vision, you know, where it's going to sit, and maybe reserve once the field's there.
Yeah, there was, and actually, home plate is on the river side, so they would be batting back towards the margin. But it's a, just a minor league field, it wouldn't be a...
Yeah, it's not going to be big enough for major, we'll be able to play T-ball, coach pitch, or minor league.
Well, I mean, I'd just like to be able to see, I mean, this is one of the things, we like to make modifications down here at the school campuses, is to see where things are going to lie. And we could just have something rough, just saying, you know, here's where the, nothing elaborate, just showing where everything is and where that would be, just roughly the dimensions, and, you know, it sounds like no problem. We'd just like to have an idea, because many of us must be, you know, I have to be, I'm a visual, I have to be able to see. But it sounds great, I think everybody's welcome, we all being able to do it. And then we could just, just have something that, John, you can just give us some, some kind of, as a, just make it, just, please. I don't know if we have, act on necessarily, but at least we'll be able to see what you're doing. And that way, if people ask us, we get more understanding of what you're going to, and help them jump up. It'd sound like a good idea. And we have one of Dana about...
Oh, well, I asked him if there would be anything to prevent that from happening again, just because we had the modules. And he said, I don't see a reason why not.
Well, I think if you were just getting something rough, and then before bringing this thing over to Dana, here's where we're intending to put this, we're probably going here, that way he can get his final okay on it. That way, you know, everything is, I hope you're sitting there, and it sounds good, I don't think it'd be a problem. Anybody else have anything? All right, thanks a lot.